I'm ready.
Okay, so it is five thirty-one and I call this for this meeting to order. Um, Ben, do we have a quorum?
Absolutely. Am I mathing it wrong?
Yeah, it should. It would be more of a quorum when Mary gets here. Um, okay, and um, William, do you mind leaving this in the credits? And Ben, are you ready to close?
Absolutely.
You can allow me to say that. Okay, Carrie, please.
Yes, okay, please. I declare the prayer to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under one invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Jesus, I thank you so much for what is this day that we come here. I thank you for this hospital. I thank you for those that work here and put out so much effort for this community. I ask that you bless us time that we meet and do business and that you be here guiding direct and help us to do all we can to help this community and help this hospital but also serve you. In your name we pray our love, Jesus Christ, amen.
Okay, so do we have any visitor comments?
What did you ask?
I said, do we have any visitor comments?
Make sure it's written here on there. Any visitor comments?
Oh, he's not listening. Okay, so um, did everyone have the opportunity to look up the minutes? Denise made one small adjustment since she put down the four theater. Just over a second. Okay, he stepped in from the bottom of the last of emotions made by Karen first. It's like the provincial in that Karen was added. So, any other additions or changes or?
Not my worst time before now.
Okay, well, I have that.
On second page at the bottom. This motion is made by Karen to engage. I think it ought to read authorize. I think that was what was actually moved. And I note that that's the verbiage used um later down at the bottom of page three. This reads better. There's a motion. There goes made a motion to authorize. I think we'll all admit that Kathy was already engaged. You want to deal with that now or can I just finish them?
Well, so you have some others down here?
Yeah, three, three left.
Okay, just we'll just keep going.
Okay, number two is at the bottom of the third page. I was too wrong there. One, it ought to say um the last line of the penultimate paragraph, Dottie still these motion down at the bottom of that. William, it ought to say Curly abstained keeping with the
Okay, yes.
The way the minutes seem to be drafted. Both names are used.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, at the last paragraph at the bottom of page three. Isn't there um, shouldn't there be a time? Uh, it should, shouldn't the notes say out of executive session and the time for people that weren't here?
Yes, they should.
Okay, where do I go?
Wait, I do. I think it was
Yeah, my minutes from last year at home. I forgot that.
Well, I'm just, I was just thinking of people that weren't at the meeting to finally look at that. I may sound idiotically enough that it is enough to wonder would they do that in executive session?
Right.
Yeah, we came out at nine oh seven.
Thanks.
So that would go right between, basically between William and Carrie.
You mean Dottie's motion and Carrie's motion to authorize?
Out of executive.
And then on the very last page. First, first full paragraph, the contract is signed. I would like to see the if clause, if the contract is signed with a Nova, move to the end. And therefore we, Karen just made a motion for Kathy Hartsburg to restructure the business office if the contract is signed with a Nova. Because the motion is not conditional.
Right, yeah.
That's it. Thank you.
Well, how could we, just for practical speaking here. So we go ahead and approve them, approve them with the, with the changes should, I wonder if you should quickly print another permit?
I can't, I've got it all ready too.
Okay, so I would impede a motion to approve the minutes then.
With changes.
With the changes also, yeah. Okay, so.
I'll second.
Okay, so Ben. Ben moves and Curly seconds. And all, any more discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. No, the minutes have been throughed. Okay, so now the agenda. Does everybody have an agenda as far as um? Do we have um? Any additions or changes to the agenda?
The only thing I was going to mention to you, manager, is that just given my time and what I've been doing, um, I don't have everything listed that I'm going to give for my CE.
Oh, we put that.
But that should work out okay.
Do we want, do we want to move Rebecca up?
I was thinking we did to move Rebecca. That way it gives her the opportunity to stay or leave. Yeah.
So, so where would we like?
Can we, can we move her up? I mean, really, couldn't, couldn't we move her up? Right after you speak about the Royal Hospital transformation and then refer strategic initiatives?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other additions or changes to the agenda? Okay, well, I would maintain the motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda with the mentioned changes, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, so we have an agenda. Okay, so I, I was very pleased with the um, says all this for I thought that um, the Royal Hospital Transformation Program and um, I thought it went well. Do you know, do you know about it? Something besides?
I did give you guys some papers on it as well. And about the piece, I'll give the highlights about and then you can talk about some of your thoughts relative to it. So on the highlights, I, I gave you a fax sheet, a frequently asked questions. And the program itself, there are five areas that they're looking at for transformation for rural areas. And those five areas include um, the uh, promoting evidence-based measurable intervention. So it's like make rural America healthy again is what they call the first one. The second one was, they do talk about providing payments to healthcare providers for the provision of healthcare items or services as specified by the administrator. But I'm trying to find my little cheat sheet I have. It's like um, the five places are um, innovation with IT, but is also sustainable access, rural health, America, um, with let's see, one, two, three. Oh, that's okay. I should have brought that sheet. It's like, you guys remember? Because I told you all.
Well, I have the big sheet that we did.
It's um, darn it, I just, this one was just the big sheet. That's fine. No, well, yeah, that would be fine. Oh, gosh, I'm just running to blink. I hate when I do that. So it's a sustainable access, IT innovation, um, make rural health, America healthy again, and uh, workforce development, innovative care. That's the areas. So we can talk about that in the managers group, but those are the five areas they're looking at. It is infusing um, a hundred million dollars at least into the state for programs to be able to reach those pieces. Um, it will be the Department of Health that will be writing the grant. We're not supposed to have to write grants ourselves to get the money from the grants that they get, but we are going to have some sort of reporting to do back. It's just not going to be as onerous. Um, they're really going out and doing the public, talking with the public in different areas, but they are also talking to, like they talk to the CEOs the other day. And we're actually going to have a meeting again with that Fonz.
Who's the man that did it?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, he's going to be at a meeting with us on October eighth. And he wants us to bring anybody from our group that we think we want to bring down to that meeting. We do have to go to Casper to go to that, but I think it would be an important meeting because we're actually trying to make sure that we have some good ideas out there to be able to present to them before October. Well, they really want the first week of October and the first would be their wish. They have a sixty-page grant, a maximum sixty-page grant that they have to write for that money to the federal government. And um, there is a chance that that money could go up to as much as even two hundred and fifty million dollars just because we weren't part of the expansion programs. Um, so with that, they've just taken some ideas. I do know that they talked pretty much about, they know that there's a problem with EMS. So they heard that message from people. And um, other than that, there's still a lot to be learned. The money will come down to the state by the mid to late December. Some of us that are more pessimistic think it might even be January before the government gets it back because the, the um, grant goes into on November first. That's a big turnaround for them to have it by mid-December. Um, so there will be some, there will be some approvals that we get from the Health Department relative to our ideas about how we would want to spend our portion of the money. And we don't know a lot more than that right now, other than that piece. And so then as far as you guys want to talk about things you may have brought up or what you were concerned about.
The one thing I brought up is I just think that we want to make sure that we don't start a new program that we can't sustain.
It's all in by your program.
Like, we want to use this for something that will, and, and when Trish talked, you know, she talked about the training piece. And I, oh, I think that's a wonderful idea.
Mm-hmm.
Wonderful.
Yeah, I think the big challenge always is they hand out money and then they say it's for five years. And then you have to make sure, we have to be pretty creative in ideas that we have for that money because you got to sustain it after that if you're going to keep that. Or you have to find something that's sustainable once you have certain things in play. So I, I don't know. And we did hear there might be a chance that they won't allow infrastructure and or capital, capital types of items as part of it. I find that kind of hard or disheartening because those are things that rural facilities really need the most of. I did ask them to consider not having it a matched funds type of situation because rural hospitals, not all of them, you know, but rural hospitals in general have trouble with capital expenditures, expenditures. And they do sustain the buildings when we have that. So the other thing is um, they did mention sort of in a, I don't know, interesting way, that they might consider places like Cheyenne and Laramie and those guys as rural as well because of rural state, which the only argument I have for that is like I went to a meeting and, you know, when somebody said they have a hundred and eighteen million dollars in philanthropy and reserves, it's like you are nowhere close to our hospitals, you know, needs and stuff. So.
Did you say that to them?
I, I did say it. Mm-hmm. I just said, please keep that. And I did say that because actually one of the people said that in the meeting. And I said, some people have that, but we don't, you know?
And there were many little hospitals still?
That's right. So, yeah, I did say that. So anyway, I'm glad they're going to have another meeting with us because I think some of us are concerned that they'll walk away from what really needs to happen and what they're really hearing if we're not careful and start throwing the agendas down like the federal government does for some other things. And I do think some of the money needs to go towards uh, healthy Ameri-, you know, healthy rural America. But I don't think it should all be there and all be driven by a bunch of sort of, a bunch of static statistics and stuff. And some of that stuff we can be doing ourselves. And we already are doing ourselves. So that's just my thoughts, nothing, no, you know?
Kathy, how much involvement is the state going to be? When state officials going to be involved there?
Not fully.
Not fully. Are we just turning the money over to the state saying?
Yep. Yep. So that's, that's why we're watching this closely and looking at it because I think you have to be willing to see what kind of strings really are attached to it and whether or not it really is a program that's sustainable beyond that five years. So more to come and I will update you as we have more meetings.
You, you both have anything else to add to?
No, thank you.
The only thing I had to add was that Tish did a great, or Trish did a great job of representing with County Health Services and our needs um, and that, and.
Well, I'm glad you had that. Thank you.
Thanks for letting me have a turn, William.
That it?
That's it, yep.
Okay, so, so do you want to introduce Rebecca Tibbs?
Yes, so I'd like to introduce to you, and please stand up for just a minute. This is Dr. Rebecca Mock. And she's our new HR director. And why don't you tell them a little bit about yourself and your background and?
That always seems like a tough question.
I know. That's why we ask it.
Well, I'll just start out with most things that are most important to me and that's my family. So I'm here from Oregon. I have three adult daughters and a grandson. So a big change of stress. My husband drove me over and he's back home. And so we're some apart um, in a long time.
He's incoming.
Yes, we're in the middle of closing the house not far from the hospital. And he um, will be here as soon as we can get our house right. So I'm very excited to be here. I've had a really warm welcome and I'm really excited about being here again. So.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And by the way, she likes Newcastle. One of her husband likes Newcastle.
Oh, he can't.
So they are sacrificing the kids being close, but they love their area they're coming to.
Still is it, yeah.
She's been a great addition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my girl, yeah. So I do have a couple of provincial in charge this month. Um, the first one is Dylan Christiansen. He's an E and T that's doing outpatient services for us. If he's um, clearly seeing patients. And then the other one is uh, Dr. Singh. He is with Blue Sky Neurology and he's just a reacqulement. So Dr. Christiansen is an initial appointment. Dr. Singh is a reacqulement. Um, there's nothing of concern in any of them that you guys can review. Equality this month, I feel like it was pretty uneventful. We had two departments present. We had the clinic present. Um, Trish mentioned all of the good things that she's going to be doing at the clinic. They had five hundred and thirty patient visits last month. So that was good. And just some things that she's going to be doing with the registration to kind of capture more information. And then the other department we had go was lab. And Erin's project is, she's doing policy review right now. So she's busy, busy with all of that, making sure that.
Yeah.
Yeah, made you busy as well. And she's just making sure that everything works good um, for policies and processes and then making sure that, you know, everything's in compliance with all of that. So when she's done with that, I think she should be done soon. She'll move on to another project. Other than that, it was pretty kind of uneventful. There wasn't any big things to discuss. So that's kind of nice. So, yeah. Um, for me, as in quality, my report, I, we had a phone call with Mountain Pacific today to do some care coordination at the clinic. So that'll be a piece that starts getting implemented for the clinic side. More to come on that. We just had our initial meeting today. Um, CNN classes still going good. I um, signed one more goal today. Which will go over to the mirror. So it's kind of in a holding pattern right now.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today. And we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Did you have any, any more to add, Carrie?
Um, I just wanted to say that the article in the newspaper that you largely did too was pretty awesome. So thank you.
Yeah, I did like that.
Yeah. It was a really great telling of, of the program to the community. So.
Yeah, so I'm hoping more people will read it and they'll want to sign up and want to come work for it. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ben. Did you have anything to add, Ben?
Uh, no, it was a short meeting. It was a good meeting.
It was good shorter when everybody's got their performances pieces. Then I guess it's a lot nicer. So we're getting there.
Okay, so we're speaking very long. Up to you now.
Current census in the nursing is fifty-three. So August, they actually averaged fifty-four, ninety-four percent. I can't see yet. On a mission in August, there are discharges. We have five referrals right that we are trying to figure out. So, yep, um, as I mentioned last time, CMS has pros are five-star ratings. So I think that will be pros for another couple of weeks. So hopefully, I mean, that gets up to, we'll actually. Let's do a little bit of the changes. Staff, we're always, we got nine agencies right now. We're one nurse and eight CNNs. And we have five one CNNs somewhere. We're in attention. So two will be full-time, three are PRNs. PRNs are high schools. So, well, we're looking to get them to pick up. But I'm glad to see them in there. Another medicating, pending near fill-up, old, but one of the tough ones, I think is about ready to get a pretty thorough. Was that Kate hoping to have a pill before I came here and said it was pretty funny? Yeah, yeah.
Any questions for Shane?
You will be missed.
I haven't added, I haven't said anything yet. I guess I'll do it now. So, um, and I'll let you finish it because I just wanted to let you know that Shane, because he does have such great talent, um, went to a meeting and out of the blue, some people that he did know, but that have a company that's a multi-facility company, um, offered him a job, which I couldn't seem refusing, a VP of Operations. So he's going to be starting with them on October tenth. Do you want to talk anymore about that or yourself and?
Yeah, yeah. Be over sing, the breast cancer, we miss where their buildings are. So, yeah. Enjoy working with you guys. It wasn't exactly an easy thing to do. But it paid for. I can talk back if you guys need anything at this point.
Yeah, I'm on my speed dial, so.
So hopefully, I'm hoping for your sake that that, that star, that thing, once the void is gone, by adding a star out.
Everyone would see us.
For sure.
No, we can't, can't put it down, but we're sorry. I was going to de-start one. So, yeah.
Okay, now we're on to Trish.
Um, it's the November third month. Um, I made charts for everybody so you can kind of see the breakdown. This is something up. Kathy and I um, took that baseline and um, that's basically where we're going to improve on each and every month. Uh, right now on the back, you can see that we have our new provider. Um, he'll be joining us on October sixth. Her name is Kelly Raymond. Um, we've got her shadowing for a couple days and then we'll have her see patients, which we're already booking her right now for October eighth and some pediatrics. Um, our clients right now, they'll probably have a split of time between Upton and Newcastle, making sure that we have patients in both locations and she can become a leader. Um, one of our nurses is leaving. Um, Mindy Jenny says that she wants to retire, but she's been staying on with us for a year and it kind of helps her through this new transition. Our records in the basement are almost stoppably empty, which is amazing. Our.
Honor and data, but it's not here tomorrow. We're actually waiting to get.
So the basement is quite interesting. I really enjoyed having anyone who really wants to come and join us. That'd be great. Uh, we do have um, we're exploring our solutions with our outdoors landscaping. Uh, we did send an email to the Honor Camp. Um, and uh, just trying to get that worked on before the winter time. We have had an offer from a family that is going to help us with some rough donations. So we're just looking to de-rowscape it so that it will look better. It's trying to get it cleaned up a little bit. Um, we have some fun things happening at the clinic. We've got drawings that this could be happening for the week of the breast cancer awareness next month. Um, we have wireless earboats and everybody that comes in is eligible to get into that drawing. And we're going to do a live on Facebook. Uh, we have decorated the outside with some flowers to brighten it up. And our patients have really noticed that. They, we've been going through a lot of dumb, dumb suckers inside. So I think if we sweeten them up a little bit, it also helps with that. But we're decorating um, the inside as well, participating in the haunted trail and the trunk or treat. We have a new door. Um, we have a breakaway door in the back now that is locked on the outside of all sides and open to the inside. So it does meet our standards. And so that's been a fun one to kind of get used to. We just have to make sure everybody knows that it does lock behind you. Um, as you have noticed, um, we have decided that we were going to try and get chronic care up and moving. That's been something that Kathy has asked me to get going. And as I said, Kim and I attended our first meeting to play with Mountain Pacific to get some additional information. And it seems like it's going to be a program that we're going to be able to kick off. And my target date is going to be January to roll that out. That will um, help us with diabetes, hypertension. Um, there's a couple of other areas, but those are the two areas that Dr. McCarthy and Dr. Henry really wants to focus on and keep those patients here rather than sending them off for care. Um, our chart, our chart audits are looking great. We have no open documentation. And the help that Kai has given us since her engagement with a Nova and making sure that we're booking on our E and M levels is fantastic. So the feedback is really good and positive. So, and you can kind of see on the other side the breakdown of the types of visits. Um, you did have plenty of block appointments, which is awesome. The one was really busy. And um, just our established care at the same time. We're seeing a lot of patients come, lingerie to see Dr. McCarthy. And we've even had um, a couple come in from Colorado already. So, yeah. So good things, really good things happening. Trish, you said you were targeting for chronic care.
Trish, you said you were targeting for chronic care.
Yes.
Diabetes and loss and hypertension.
Mm-hmm. And that may change just depending on our current events and numbers. We've been able to find some reports. And I think that we can run um with those vulnerabilities and we'll be able to um see what our levels are. And then we can make that determination. So all good things.
How does that, I'm, if, this might be a, this is a really bad question, but are you able, probably the doctors can't tell the patients that have these issues that come and join us for you.
So we can offer the program to them, so they have to be Medicare patients. And we can show them how it can help them by having that one-on-one call. It has to be twenty minutes a month to be able to be billable. And the reimbursement is forty dollars back to the facility. So if you have two hundred visits and you have, or two hundred patients and you do forty dollars, that's a hundred thousand dollars in lots of money. So we're hoping that maybe by the first year we can afford patients, but I would love to have two hundreds. So, but it's gonna be really good because I think in our um aging community, I think that sometimes if patients have questions about a new medication or they're not at any time, then that conversation that they're having with that nurse is going to either one, get them into the facility, get them checked out, or it will ease their minds so that they're not creating more anxiety. So all good things that are happening and um Kathy's really excited about it and this is our goal and so we're gonna roll it out.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy. We have a bootlegger's liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing. The coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
Kathy's really excited about it and this is our goal and so we're gonna roll it out.
I'm so excited. I, I, you're just doing a great job. I've not, I've been really happy with the people that we've been able to find and took us months to find the right person. She's done a great job.
Okay, good question. Is that, on the nurse visits, is that what you're talking about if a patient calls up and has a question?
So nurse does, it would be somebody that was either just coming in to have uh staples, shoe treatment, or just a vaccination that's really quick. Um, nothing that would require a doctor to come in and see that patient.
Years.
Yeah.
The, the stuff she's talking about now, Mary, that's gonna be a new, that'll be a new one.
And measurement.
Okay. I wondered what that entails.
Mm-hmm. And and hopefully, when we do rule that out, we'll have that as a line item that will actually tell us how many visits we have um per month. I was playing around with some of the reports today and it was interesting. When we just put in some criteria and what it returns back to as far as eligibility and it was promising, truly promising.
Thank you.
Okay. So, any, any more questions for Trish?
It is, it is totally up to you guys, but you can stay or go, depending on what you wanna do. I've always, we've worked really hard to move you guys to the front so that if you need to leave, you can, because it can be a long meeting. If you wanna stay, you're good to stay too.
Oh, you're good to stay.
Then you can't blame me. And there's good food over there.
Yeah, grab something before you go. Okay. Um, so are you going for a stay or is this?
I'll cover most of it.
I know, I will, yep. So, um, good news for the month of August. The facility actually had a positive bottom line. We have a net gain of two thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars and it sounds small, but it's a nice place to start.
It's a lot better than the net.
It, it was.
Lot better than the parentheses.
Yes. We had a actual budget of negative forty-five thousand is what we budgeted, so we beat budget, which is phenomenal. Um, staff has really stepped up their revenue game. As you can see with some of the census, swing bed, right out of the park, home health, right out of the park. Home health had a positive bottom line for the month. And Heather worked very hard to get that out. So that was a good, good job for you. Good kudos. Um, the Newcastle Clinic was worse than budget. Their um income for the month was five thousand four hundred versus forty-two thousand, but they're working on it, as you can tell.
But the numbers are better.
The numbers are better, yeah, the, the visits are up. When the visits are up, the cash will come, which is great. Upton Clinic was worse than budget. They were actually um had a negative six thousand five hundred versus a negative one hundred and eighty-six. Um, but they increased their budget. So next month, we will have more cash based on those visits for, for the revenue.
It was really up.
They were really up.
Hundred and twenty-two visits, I think.
Yeah. It was, it was, it was a big uptick.
Yeah, we have a leader. Someone that's driving the ship. She's really done a good job.
Yeah, she is bringing everybody up to snuff, which is, we're seeing those numbers increasing. Um, specialty clinic was slightly worse than budget, thirty-two thousand versus thirty-four thousand. So they were just tiny little bit underneath. Um, gross patient revenue was better than budget. We hit two-point-seven million versus a budget of two-point-five million. So that was a nice increase for everybody. Contractuals or the deductions from revenue, contractuals are what we agree to discount. Um, they were higher. We actually had deductions in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-three thousand versus a budget of eight hundred and eight thousand. So when we went over the details in uh finance committee, so they were aware of what part they hit. Um, retail pharmacy revenue was worse than budget. The retail pharmacy had a revenue of four hundred and twenty-one thousand versus a budgeted of five hundred and forty-six thousand. Total expenses for the month were two-point-three million. That is better than budget by twenty-eight thousand. So we actually had a decrease in expenses and an increase in revenue, which is the direction that we wanna continue to do. Um, supplies were a little over budget. Census drives your supplies, so when your swing bed census is up, your supplies are gonna go up. So that's out of the brainer. You can have all the patients you want. We'll, we'll go ahead and get the supplies in for you. Um, recruiting, which is kind of misleading because that is where all the traveling staff hit the um profit and loss. Um, and we are over budget on recruiting because of traveling staff.
Are you as much over budget on recruiting as we were last?
No, no, it's gone down. It's gone down, so it is continuing in the right trend. Well, two months doesn't actually make a trend, but I will say it's a pot of positive move. So um lease and rental expenses are over budget. Um, because of the CT project, we have to, we are renting eight modular CT. It's too important to patient care to not have one while we are in transition of getting rid of the old CT and getting our new CT in.
Quite part of our business.
It's a big part of what we do every month and it's vital to um patient care. Especially when you're talking about EVs, car accidents, things like that. Um, so we also received grant funds this month. Um, in-home services received five thousand six hundred for their grant. Um, so those grants lag thirty days. He submits an invoice, then they pay it, so we have that thirty-day lag. Donations for the CT project came in in the amount of one thousand seven hundred. We did receive a forty thousand, but it's.
It was right between your, it was right between our meetings, basically, yeah.
Yeah, it was just in a, we pointed in a different. Yeah.
They're all in a close, it's a bank.
So we also received, received money from United Fund of three thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars. We have miscellaneous revenue. We have travelers that are paying rent in the amount of five hundred dollars. Um, specialty clinic um rent is um one thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars. We also received a tax refund for our quarterly nine forty-one payroll taxes in the amount of sixty-seven dollars and seven cents. And we held bake sale for the benefit of the employee banquet and it made five hundred dollars. Thank you for all the yummy goodies. My zucchini bread was outstanding. Um, we also got money from the mill levy, which was thirty-six thousand. We had meal income, so I had um, I had Shane off Melissa who heads up our dietary department. And we found that some of the revenue was going to the wrong ledger. So you can add about another thousand dollars to that, so that's much more in line with what we expected. So um I will adjust that next month. You will see, see it to be accurate. We had interest income in the amount of twenty-seven thousand. We have operational expense. Those are interests we pay on the bonds. We, we have a bond payment every month. I made enough copies. I probably killed three trees.
Do you want one, Rebecca?
Do you want copies? So then we've got, um, we have additional interest that we pay. One is on the bonds. The other one is on the pull packet machine. And that's also listed in the twenty-eight hundred that's there.
In the words?
Yes. Yes. I brought one for everybody to look at. I didn't print out. So I make a little bit of a new narrative.
Yeah.
Um, cash collections were down for the month of August. But our cash days on hand increased. They increased because our expenses went down. Our daily expenses went down from ninety-nine thousand the prior month to sixty-seven thousand. That's per day. Um, expenses to work, expenses to, to keep us up and running, but um that is going in the right directions. We'll see if that continues. Everybody was very proactive and really watching what they're spending when they are able to do so. Um, the accounts receivable decreased um by three-point-four days, so it went down. Um, our gross days are, were um forty-nine point two. The goal is forty-five and that was recommended by our auditors. Um, they are currently DZA out of Spokane, Washington. Um, there wasn't really a whole lot other than what I just went over. I have a few notes to let everybody know what um Anova is doing. That is the company that we contracted with to assist with our accounts receivable. So they have completed all of their epic training. They are enrolled in PECOS, ABELI, the SSI, and Meridian. We are still working on their Novitas, which is for the clinics, Medicare. However, they are um credentialing did start work the early part of September. They have also engaged with Meridian to find out and clarify, clear up our Medicare billing issues and our Medicare railroad billing issues. We have a lot of claims that are out there that we can still bill in a timely fashion and get paid for them, so they are working on that. Um, they are in also identifying accounts in our accounts receivable that we can't do anything with. That we, that are just sitting there. Um, we can't bill for them. They're too old to bill for. So we are gonna be writing those off. They identified a hundred and um forty accounts for thirty-one thousand dollars. So we are writing those off. You will see that in the month of September. And we are.
It is not a hundred thousand.
Yeah, it, it, it wasn't a lot, but it is, that's a hundred and forty accounts that we'll get off, but it will reduce our accounts receivable. It's just dead weight that we're carrying. So um we wanna go ahead and get the accounts receivable as clean as possible. Get it as front-loaded as possible, which means most of our accounts receivable are in zero to ninety days. That's our goal. That's where, we don't want accounts getting old, because the older they are, the harder they are to get paid. Um, and it can cause consternation with your community when they're getting a lot self-paid that it has, that's been old. You know, because it, we took so long trying to get their insurance paid. So we're shortening up those timeframes, so they hit the floor running. Any questions?
Comment?
Yes, sir.
I would describe those suffered through the last financial committee meeting. Now that. Which has now aided me in understanding how to read the narrative report. I appreciate you taking the effort. Okay. But I'd like to add, I appreciate your work on the financials a lot.
Thank you.
The committee too, appreciate that.
Right, we, um, this is the gold financial pack. We actually have P and Ls for all of the departments, which is awesome and a huge step and thank you very much, but.
You're welcome. She's very informative.
They are.
Please.
They really are. Uh, one thing I wanted to add from what you read on where it says total Weston County Health Services income statement and you talked about the clinic, um, it's the total net income.
Clinics, not total income.
Because when you said it, I was like, oh, I missed that.
Net income, yes. Yes, ma'am.
That's the clinic here.
Clinic here. Those are net clinics.
Oh, I see, thank you.
I can put that in there. I've, I've modified, so next month, everybody's gonna get a new narrative. It's, but, so I can add that word in there. That makes it, the whole goal is trying to make it as concise and simple to understand as possible. So if you got suggestions.
Can we talk real quick about the forty-nine point two and the accuracy of that number, just so the whole board knows?
Um, well. Okay, there is a specific formula in which you um.
So what Sam is talking about is the days of.
The days.
Receivable standing.
That's what I was going to. So there is a methodology and a formula that you utilize to do that. We pull that data off of Epic's dashboard. So um, but when you manually calculate it, it comes a little different. If you take a different report and you take the aging and you add it, you know, it's revenue divided by accounts receivable times three hundred and twenty-five days gives you your days. It's off. It comes up to like fifty-one. So we've, I put a ticket into Epic to find out what formula and what data they're pulling those numbers for. They're from, so I should probably get something within the next two to three weeks.
The other thing is that the AR days are different for home health and they're different for the clinic, so that's something just to keep in mind because.
We have professional billing and hospital.
Right, we have professional billing and those are not, you know, those are, we're still working on, so, but they. I saw a number that Sandy gave me today for home health that I think was at sixty days, which is much better than it has been at some times. So that's, that's the good news. The bad news is it's not where we want it to be yet, but we've had some trouble with some of the vendors, so we're working through that process.
Sarah is walking. Have you talked to Sarah yet? Sarah. She's in new home health. I will, I will make arrangements for.
Sorry. Well, just as the, like our, all the providers.
Professional billing part?
Yeah, it's all, they all, I know, it's.
Predential, yes, they are.
They are.
I'll call it enrollment to separate credential and enrollment, but they call it credentialing to confuse everybody. I mean, they, the, the part that does the AR.
So they're, so we're getting paid for the providers right now.
All the claims are out. We are waiting. They have been accepted by the payers, so we're waiting for cash to come back.
That, but there are a couple of things. Novitas, we don't have that approval process gone through. So there is professional billing for the clinic that still needs to happen because we don't have all the approvals through PECOS. So I, I, what I wanna say is we've come a long way. I let's just say we leaned very hard to get the PECOS stuff signed up and authorized for other people to get in there and to have my name on there. There was Mary's name on there for that stuff, so, yeah, so. I'll just say it that way. I'll just say it that way. Hard.
And then Nova has helped in that. To get that whole process rolling and is for the future.
We have bills from November of twenty four that are still sitting there waiting to get billed. So we need to get those resolved. They are still billable and they are still billable until the first of November. So we wanna hurry up and that's on the shortlist to hurry up and get out the door. So that's Medicare um, railroad. And Meridian, which is the other side of the Medicare piece. So. We're just waiting for uh, CMS Medicare and uh, to get through all of the enrollment. We've submitted everything. We're just waiting. Once we get that approval, we'll release all those claims. So we should be getting a big chunk of funds coming in.
That's what I'm expecting. His next week's payroll.
Yeah, so um, Finance Committee, Trish did Tish did a great job of um. Working down everything that we talked about and um, we just had uh, some discussions about. The wording on the financial report and trying to make it easier for everyone to understand and um. That it provides a good summary for everyone. So you can dig in if you'd like, but hopefully. This is a good step in providing a nice summary for everyone that's easy to understand. Did you find it helpful?
She didn't get the right narrative yet.
Who was in the? She 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 calls it narrative. You call it. So we need to be consistent. Narrative was the. The answer was Financial Committee meeting when I asked about what the document was.
Oh, that's the first two. That's the first two pages, yeah.
And then the rest are reports now.
Reports. We have lots of paper.
Yes, you do.
Really, I'm all worked on my words.
Having someone so easily confused.
No, no, I work with doctors.
Is there any more for the um, for the Finance Committee?
Progress, that was nice.
Thank you for that report.
Yeah, it is very. Very nice.
And this we this um, month, uh, Ted wasn't here, so Ben joined us at Finance Committee. So. I thought it was good meeting. We had some good discussions.
Well, it was a really good meeting. I still have to ask people about some acronyms around here, so that's okay. And Dr. Zachalman's at the legislation too, so you'll send that off that way.
Yep. Well, William's point is a good one, and I will work to be more clear and use less acronyms.
Oh, but I love top. It turned out not to be an acronym.
Very great. Um, oh, what is it? It was um.
The top of the report.
Yeah, it's a top of the report. And William's like, what does that mean? You're like, no, that's the top.
I don't feel I was set up.
Okay, okay. Are we on to Kathy now?
Yeah, so I've introduced Rebecca and um, Anova update. I actually. Feel like you got a good update on that part. I do have an executive session, the contract details, follow up with you on 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 that piece. And so the rest of my pieces would be there are kind of two new areas that they that um. Miami Hospital Association is talking about relative to being critical issues for the for rural hospitals and putting this at risk. One is the enhanced low volume adjustment rate that we receive. Um, it's it's called, there's a legislation, it's Senate Bill three thirty five. That's the Rural Hospital Support Act, and it would allow the program to be put to stay in place permanently. Instead of sunsetting sunsetting on September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. So that's just the extra enhanced ha- enhanced monies that we see sometimes. The other one is the medic that. The other one of those two critical areas is called Medicare dependent hospital programs. So we're one of those hospitals as a rule that were dependent on reimbursements because we don't have the volume piece, right? Um, so the House of Representatives has a bill eighteen oh five, HR eighteen oh five. That's called the Assistance for Rural Community Hospitals or ARCH. The Low Volume Adjustments, LVA. So that's what I mean. We all have these acronyms, but um, their proposal is to extend it an additional five years. Um, that I think is making it so that this is just me reading into it, but what I'm reading into it is if one doesn't pass, hopefully the other one does. So that that it stays in place. So there's two different ways that they're approaching that those bills. And we're just being asked to please advocate with the Congress about making sure that they're still supporting. Rural hospitals and our low volume piece and the adjustments that we need. So for example, we get that gap payment that comes down through the federal. Government that helps make up for the gap we have based on our lower volumes. Makes sense? Okay, so I just wanted to make you aware of that. I will, I'm gonna write some letters and talk to them about us. Needing that. We need to continue doing that. Unless any of you guys have a huge disagreement with that, but that's the money that we get back. That really does help sustain our operations. So I would hope you would like to keep it.
Kathy, is there anything in the legislation about supporting physicians?
Not yet, but I do think it will come up. I just don't think they have it put together. Um, I I will let you know too specifically.
This payment, does it come from the state or the?
Well, what happens? It comes from the feds to the state and then to us type of thing. That's the way I understand it.
So then it always that sunset.
It sunsets because they're only putting in for five. This is really famous of of Congress to do. They'll put something up for including in the state. They'll put it up for five years and then they'll say they'll sunset it at five years. And then what you have to do is show over that five year period whether or not that's a successful program and it's made difference in in your. Your communities and stuff. And then they'll go back and either try to get it permanent or they'll say, let's do it another five years. And it depends on how you sit in in Congress and how you feel about it, how that goes. You have anything different to say about that, Shane? I see you're listening, but that's basically what it is. They put sunsets on stuff a lot of times. So that they don't have to um, put themselves in jeopardy of putting something in place that permanently that maybe may not work out.
So is it the is it the state that had the sunset on it or is it the?
Feds.
So it's actually, the way I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not, it's included in our, it's a rate setting thing. So it it they include it in the rate that they set for the hospital. So it's not like they send you a check for. One of these two things. It's included in.
It's a gap analysis.
In your rate that you're then paid out over those five years. So if they remove that as part of your rate, then your rate goes down. So.
I just wanna make you aware of it, just in case any of you have a congressional person you wanna talk to too, you'd like. See that. I can send you more information by phone than I need.
It's the feds, not the state.
Did I say state? I'm not federal.
Care rates, so it's federal. Yeah, the Medicaid rate is half state, half bed.
So. Well, that sounds confused which it was, so.
It's ju- it's like um, I can't imagine them not taking it away really, to be honest with you. I don't know how. People, it's like you give somebody that for five years, this whole conversation, then can they sustain themselves without it? And a lot of it's done because of the gaps we have in volume. And so I don't know how you would ever really consider doing that. Unless you're like brutal. And I I haven't heard anything that suggests that Trump's administration is against rule. In fact, it. Like the opposite. So I don't think.
You know.
Yeah.
Just don't accept any invitations to Washington about this from the Trump administration.
Uh, you know, they send me stuff all the time cuz they like to get money back, so.
I I actually have so this question for you. Uh, John Birch Society or the Public Party or some of the group are interested in the legislation. And our electors knowing that we want that, it'd be a little form that they can modify, but they don't have to. Email or send or call about, makes it much easier to get people to do it. Uh, it is too late on this, but. Do we have any mechanism?
They haven't sent something like that out yet, and I listened to Chip the other day at a meeting, well, the other day is a couple of months ago, but. He said that if he gets a phone letter, he throws him away immediately. He doesn't even pay attention to him cuz he wants to hear. From the person. So I do think it works with, I think it works better at the federal level. Potentially, but it doesn't work at the state level with at least Chip.
Like, they would get three hundred emails a day. And so the first emails we look at are the ones that that. That are not look, that do not look exactly the same as everybody else.
But.
And that's, and so when you've got so many, that's.
Yeah, but what you can do is, and I and I've done this, they send you a phone letter and then I just butcher it and make it my own. And that's what I, to get the idea out. So I agree with you.
Right, that makes it much easier to make his second draft and you have, uh, okay, slash.
Yeah, so um, I can I can put some of this into language and then you guys can look at it from there. Even a phone call or something, if you decide to do that, just to support the rural market would be really good. So if they always have somebody answer the phone. And they're really pretty good usually at getting somebody to answer back to you. Most of them. The ones I've called, even in California when I lived there, they they would go back, even if I wasn't in the same party group or something, they would answer me back. Might not be the same answer, but they would answer back, so.
Gonna take a lot more than a five person Economic Development Board or the seven person city council or the five person county commissioners. Or or even the hospital board. Um, the the public at this point really needs to have a stake in the game. And needs to come forward and to have some honest discussions and some ideas and and even more than just the community, I'd say. The younger people, um, those younger people in their twenties that are in Newcastle and Weston County raising their kids. Those people that don't want to leave, those people that want their kids to grow up in Newcastle and graduate an NHS doggy just like they did. Those are the people that are going to have to step up and come forward and and offer some solutions and uh. Do a little bit of soul searching and becoming a more active member in the community.
I said I would do that. Answer back what they think and not what they think you want to.
Right.
Know where they stand, yeah.
And then I think I mentioned on October eighth, they want us to go to Casper for the CEOs and they said any of our court staff, we want to have meet with. Fans Fuchus. I thought, I don't know how to say his last, his name, but he's with the Wyoming Department of Health. I'm still getting to know people here because it's been a while since I've been back in Wyoming. Um, I'm probably, I haven't told. Trish staff, but I'm gonna see whether she's willing to go to it at least for sure for the clinic side of it. Um, or look at the nursing home manner side of it, that sort of thing, because it is rural health. I think that a lot of people look at at hospital, but I think we need to get very big in our thought process relative to transformation. I hadn't thought beyond that. Who else I might have? They just want me to send something back to say how many people I'm bringing to the meeting. So they are opening a lot bigger than the CEOs, which I think is wise. Because we don't have all the answers. Right, um.
I just, I think it's wonderful that you represent the needs of the hospital, but the other part of our health system is the doctors. And when they're, when they talk about legislation, the big dollars are in the hospitals. So they seem to always forget about the physicians and you can't run a health without physicians. So also I mean, very equally as a court in in the discussions. On monies and rates and all of that, because if you feed the hospital, then they'll pay the doctors.
Well, and and that's probably gonna be something we can work through that workforce development piece because I. They have things like there's somebody sitting there that gets these students and stuff, but it's still not fully effective because you need some. There should be some programs to help with stipends and stuff to encourage. And it just even giving their s- their college tuition and stuff paid for to encourage providers to do that, you know. Sometimes because we have some advantages as a role that we can help them with their loans, but I do find. It would be nice to just get the right fit person because sometimes they'll come here for just long enough to get their loans paid and then they're gone for the rural market. So I'd like to see a little bit ba- a better balance and see that more sustainable than it is right now. So, yeah. Um, and then um, with the resignations that we've had, um. I will talk any kind of detailed pieces, but I do wanna let you know that I do have plans for going forward. So right now, um, Tisha's going to be under a contract for us to continue helping support us. We appreciate that very much. While she's at home, um, and working with a family health issue that's that's there for her family. She told me I could say that, so that's what I said. And then um, uh, with Shane, we have actually had in in process. Before my time, having um, Kim become a nursing home administrator. She's actually done her provisional work and she's got all of her hours in. She does have to renew her provisional license because we had Shane. But she can is ready to take her final test as well. So she's gonna take an interim role to be able to do that. Um, to support the manner. And for me, to me, this is a really good sign of succession planning and working ahead to make sure that you get somebody. So she's gonna try it out for that interim period while we're we're doing everything and see if it fits her and if uh, you know, the. This whole cohesiveness of it works. And in the meantime, we've got a couple of ideas I can announce now, but for how we're gonna have quality covered in the. But we do have some qualified people that can do that as well. So I just wanted to reassure everybody that that, you know. Did we plan on changing maybe? No, but we do have some planning that we've done in the meantime while we've been been doing that. And that's what money should go to. We paid money to be able to help her to do that and we should use that wisely and we're using it wisely. So congratulations to Ms. Kim who didn't hesitate. She took a deep breath and did a little. You know, but Shane also offered to come come by, you know, and I mean, not come by. I don't know if he said that, but he did say he's a phone call away. So.
And I just wanna say thank, I imagine it's gonna be Denalda and her team that are gonna take over some of the quality stuff.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for stepping up too.
That and Tish, thank you for the work that you've done. Um, that's. I'm very welcome.
Yeah, I submit challenge. And uh, yeah, it's it's a it's sad that um. It's good for both of them, but they need to do what's their priorities for them. Um, it's good for us that we actually have something to work with. So that would, that's really good.
We got in so much better place than we were when you got here.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so um, as and as I agree, things change, you know, you always want them to stay, but they do change. Um, and I think the only thing I was gonna also was gonna mention is that we're starting to look at collection companies and self-pay companies. Separately, the self-paid potentially a separate company from the collections because otherwise they might let it sit there a while and then you're not getting. What you need out of your situation, but we haven't come up with the perfect one yet, the perfect strategy for that. We just wanna make you aware that we are working on it. A different solution because we don't feel like our collections process we have right now is adequate and it costs us twenty four percent. So that's a lot of money. Yeah. That's my reports.
Can we step back for just a minute?
Yeah.
Meeting you're going to in Casper, what is that?
It's gonna be on October eighth.
Okay, that would be an opportunity to bring up or highlight maybe more of your concerns about that money going to the large cities.
Absolutely, it will be. Yeah, oh.
We can do that without you.
I do, there was something else in October eighth. Oh, go ahead. Yeah, you can do it without me.
Without time.
This has been my life the last few weeks, so. October eighth.
Yeah, I just, I think we need to to really stress the idea that, cuz I'm.
Yeah, I just, I think we need to to really stress the idea that, because I can just see the state going on. It's gonna be a boondoggle. We can give, you know, the big hospitals all the money they need.
Well, and I have had a couple of authors, opportunities, I already started on, I didn't know that. Had a couple of opportunities to sit on these that people ask me to go to, and I can see people gearing up already to be vendors to solve problems for us. And it they're associated, there's having spoken, they're associated with bigger system hospitals and I just want to be really cautious with that because then then less of the money comes towards the rules sometimes than it than should come towards the rural facilities. I'm not trying to be disrespectful to them because there's things that they offer that we need, that our patients need, but I when they have a lot of money in reserve and we don't, I just.
I just don't know how you consider Cheyenne and Laramie rural.
And Casper.
Well, they, I'm sure they are considered rural, but they're.
They shouldn't be.
I'm not my way on it as well. Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean Boise is considered rural than to compared to Chicago, you know what I mean? It's just.
Yeah, it seems that sending larger money to Laramie, Cheyenne would for support of rural health would accelerate the problem with rural health in the rest of the state.
Yes.
But that concern, I think, just needs to be highlighted as well.
Well, we started it at.
These is, it was I was reading into that meeting, like I felt they started off right from the start where they wanted to prioritize price and by prioritizing price that they were already preconceived towards things that aren't sustainable, which will increase cost for the long run. So um, you know, we really like it highlighted for them, like training and things like that, that will reap benefits but not have a sustained cost after.
Right. And they did talk about right up front on the paperwork, they said um rural health, they they talk about health systems helping us and or rural health, rural health getting together and making their own um system. And I gotta be honest, I don't wanna, I wanna be careful with how much we get have to go by our systems processes and their mandates because they're bigger and they're gonna drive everything and I'm not sure. I am cautious about that because I've been in those chairs. I'll just say it that way.
I was saying when you put the government in charge of reducing prices.
Um, well, I I won't comment on that because I have to talk to those people, but um, I do, I do appreciate the time and then um Scotland was a great trip. Thanks for allowing me the time and I will pro- I think that my goal is the first partial week of October. My brother's funeral will be on the fourth. Um, and I'm probably gonna take some days before that and then try to get back quickly for that next week. But I didn't want to leave. I just can't do my dad any different than to give him some of my physical time with him. So sorry, I'm still trying to work through that stuff, that emotional stuff. And um so I will probably take that time for bereavement in that timeframe. And I will still have Shane here for a week. Tish will be available by phone. I told him, you know, you're probably gonna be the administrator for the whole kit and caboodle, but he needs to get ready for vice president operations. So um, and I think that he can do that and do it justice and he's got plenty of great managers to help support him and directors.